All right, welcome to the regular school board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. Monday, September 21st, 2020, we are in person in the governor's room at the community center in St. Peter. It is 6:30 PM. I would like to call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. So if we could stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all.
All right, thank you. If there are, well, if there's anyone out there who would like to make a motion to adopt this agenda, that would be helpful.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That takes a lot less than a roll call.
Yeah.
If anyone is interested in speaking to the agenda, Sarah, I don't know, we are in a sort of hybrid meeting here where we are in person, but we have some admin members who will be contributing to the meeting, who will be doing that virtually as well as the public. So, but if there is a request to speak to an agenda item, we will, we will try and accommodate that. All right, we will move to approval of consent agenda items. And we were just saying how in past years, we did read these items individually. We have stopped doing that this year as it is not required, but those are in the packets. Board members have seen them. That is public information. And I am particularly grateful today because it is a very, very long list. So just for highlights, we have typical things like minutes and finances in there. John, I don't know if you have anything to add about the finances?
I was, Mr. Chair, I went down to the district office last week and all the bills are in order.
Thank you very much. For personnel items, there are four leave requests, eight resignations, and 34 new hires.
Wow.
So that is a lot of personnel change for, for the district. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. If any member would like to pull any particular item for conversation, we can always do that as well.
I move to accept the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
If we have a question on one of the items, do we have to pull it or how does that work? Or just ask it?
You can just ask.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering on the one hire for the high school, what the sub assignment is that? I didn't see any of that for the other schools. Is that just for that school? Or is that a substitute for every single day of the school year? I wish I had a letter.
What letter?
Um, what, letter?
I don't think that there are letters assigned.
It's done at the end of it.
Oh.
Instead of at the beginning.
Oh, shoot, okay.
Page 67 is the end of it.
All right, let me get to page 67.
And then you can scroll backwards. I don't know where it starts.
Well, you have the page that was on, correct?
Yes. What was on page, well, okay, now I gotta go to this one to find it. Sorry.
Is it page 31?
Page, it's the one with, yes, yeah. I'm just curious. I mean, I'm not, not saying I don't approve it. I'm just curious if that, is that all schools that we have a sub? And is that sub every day?
It's, this person will be working as a long-term daily substitute teacher at the St. Peter High School for the duration of the hybrid learning. They will be available to assist as a substitute teacher as well as work in student outreach.
Okay, so it's just like an...
And, and I'll, I'll have Annette jump in if I'm misspoking, misspeaking on this, but I believe it's starting off as a long-term substitute, but then would be available to serve as a substitute in other classrooms. As, as we know, we're having a very hard time finding substitutes this year. So if anyone out there wants to be a substitute, if you have a college degree, we can help you get a short-term license. But I have no doubt that this person's going to be very busy every day.
Okay.
And this person is also a former
Yes.
regular teacher in our district as well.
And on a side note, I really love the consistent formatting with all of the memos. I thought that was very nice. I don't know if that's always been like that, but it was nice to be able to scroll down and see.
Thank you. Any other questions? We do have a motion in a second. So with that, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We do have five action items tonight, and we will start with action item number one, consider certification of preliminary 2020 levy. Superintendent Gronseth, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And again, this is the preliminary levy that you set in September of each year. You will revisit this in February to actually set the number. And it is very common. In fact, I don't, I don't know that I know of any school districts that don't set it at the max as a regular practice. What it does, it allows you the most flexibility as you move into, into December, especially this year with COVID and kind of the unknown expenses that may arise in the next few months. We want to have that flexibility in place. And so I, I'll ask Mr. Regner to, to give us an overview. Is he? Let's see if that's gonna work.
Thank you.
They can't hear us.
They can hear.
That's bad.
It's like full of run.
I can, do you want the committee to speak to it? I'd rather have Tim do it.
And here is him.
All right. Well, we did meet at the finance committee and went over all of the details of this. There was one more change. We had mentioned that we continue to get some adjustments from the state, and we did have another adjustment on Friday after the finance committee. And so the total increase would be a 2.3 if we did in fact set it at the maximum. Like I said, you do have flexibility and would set that in December.
Mr. Gronseth, just to clarify, the levy cannot go up from the, the 2.3, but it can go down in December, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Exactly.
I move to approve setting the levy at the maximum, 2.3. Well, is that a good number to use? Because are we done with the state? Or should I just say the maximum?
Just say the max.
The maximum allowed.
I'll swing a bit.
Great, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? And we'll be working on this through the next few months as well, so.
I know, we, we don't have him on, but Tim, don't you agree, gave a very thorough running through all of the different categories and things. I thought it was excellent, excellent presentation, and I felt very comfortable about it.
Excellent. And I apologize for not making the finance meeting last week. I was up north for work, so.
A job. You got it. Once in a while.
We have a motion in a second?
Yeah, the audio's a little weak. I mean, I can hear him, but.
Well, we can hear you, Darren, so.
You got a cranky speaker.
That means we can't visit. Darn it.
All right, we can hear you now. Can you hear us?
This is a dangerous situation.
It totally is. I'm just, we're all sitting on this.
We're getting there.
I'm texting them. We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Darren, we can hear you now on the, on the meeting.
Yeah, we have to turn your live stream on.
Yeah.
You can, we can.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second.
Well, they sort that out.
I mean, I appreciate the Herculean efforts to get this to work, but you know, if we, if we are comfortable, this isn't something that we're deciding tonight and then, and then it's done. It's just the beginning.
It's preliminary.
Yeah.
I think Tim is here too. Tim, if you'd like to speak to it, they're talking about the levy.
Okay, yeah, I think I heard part of it. I was watching on, on the live stream. It's, it's basically the maximum levy is what we certify each year. Are typically certified in 99% of the school districts do that. It kind of leaves your options open. And then between now and December, at the truth in taxation meeting and the school board meeting then, we're trying to refine it. I think the levy's up about 2.3% from last year. And I tried to lay out in that, the memo, you know, the four or five different categories where it changed probably the most. Actually, this year, not a real lot of change. And we left everything pretty much the same as last year, you know, partly because of all the uncertainty with, with finances going forward for the next year. Kind of leaves our options open. And then we can, we can change things between now and December, depending upon how things, you know, basically develop on everything else, on the virus and the financial front, which is, you know, it's kind of a big for this year. So I guess, you know, typically having to pass on the maximum. And then what we do is we, we send in, and that basically sets your truth in taxation, the preliminary tax statement that the residents of the school district will get, the maximum amount that it is, and then it'll adjust from there. You know, and depending upon each individual tax person, their levy will not be up 2.3% on the preliminary. It depends on all different factors as far as your value, values of everything else. So it's, you know, some will be down a little bit and some will be up. But 2.3 is, you know, is a, you know, small increase. And it's, you know, I tried out, like I said, there in the different categories why it did. I don't know if there's any specific questions. I should be glad to answer them on that.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions? Hearing no further discussion, we do have a motion in a second. All those in favor of certifying the preliminary 2020 levy at the maximum, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to action item number two, which is the first reading of policy 005.4 prohibiting harassment and violence. Don't know if the committee or Superintendent Gronseth would like to start?
I can start. Thank you, Chair Leonard. There have been some changes to federal law in Title IX, which require us to make changes in our policy and some of our procedures. And while we are looking at doing an audit of, of all of our policies, a global approach to that, we need to make some transitional changes to this policy. And so what I did is I took policy 522 from MSBA, which is the model policy that they would use, and then looked at our own 005.4, which has a few more elements than the model policy did. And so I combined the two of them together so that it has the elements that it needs according to the new laws and which are laid out in MSBA's 522, and included the pieces that our current policy covers, so that it covers both of them. When we go through a larger process, if we decide to, to do those changes, we'll revisit this, and some of those pieces will likely go out to different policies. This form of it makes sure that we're maintaining those other pieces that wouldn't have been in the model policy. And we had really great discussion at the policy committee, kind of worked through some of these pieces. And I'm sure other members of that committee have other things that they'd like to add.
I guess for myself, it was pretty confusing when we got started. There was a lot of good suggestions and a lot of good talk, but I liked the way we kind of finished it up. And yeah, there's gonna probably have to be more work down the line. So, but for right now, I think it's great.
I think what happened, to reiterate, combining the new Title IX guidelines into what we currently have, and there was no changes made to what we currently have. It was just the combining and removing things that were no longer pertinent as far as sexual violence. Is that correct, Superintendent Gronseth?
Yes.
So.
Really, the biggest confusion, I think, was more coming from like the sections that we have. We have like a personnel section and we have a student section. And so this particular policy was in the personnel section, but when you were reading it, it was referring to student stuff as well. So then that's where things got a little crossed. So I think that's what probably needs to be cleaned up, is probably the student stuff in the student section. If you would agree with that?
Yes. Our current numbering system is a little different than MSBA's numbering system. So the 500 series in MSBA is regarding students. And the chapter five for us is staff. And so that's, that's why it's a little confusing.
Well, I really appreciate the policy committee's work on this and also working with MSBA on the re, looking at all of our policies and considering aligning those numbers better with MSBA so that we're comparing apples to apples when we're doing things like this. So I should have asked this prior to the meeting, but this is a first reading. So is this, are we taking action on a first reading or?
That was my question.
Oh, so.
We don't have to take action, do we?
So you, you would usually have that in informational? My fault.
No, that, no, that's okay. That's okay. I think it's good to call it out like this. But if, if you want to, as a first reading, if you go through this and have any questions, please get those to Superintendent Gronseth before the next meeting as our
Yep.
past practice. That will be when it becomes an action and we'll vote on it at the next meeting. So.
Okay.
Fantastic. All right. Moving on to item number three, consider the approval of the 2020-21 school year adjustments in response to COVID-19 memorandum of understanding between ISD 508 and St. Peter Education Association.
Thank you. And I really want to start by calling out SPEA and how flexible that they have been in preparing for this school year. There's been so much work done. And what really came to the forefront in all of our conversations is really a deep caring for our students and our community, and really wanting to do what's best for students. And so we came up with this MOU. We, as you know, we had a need to make adjustments to the school year and the school calendar. And what that meant was that for our elementary teachers, the contract states that they would have their preparation time fully within the student day. And because we had to make changes to the schedule, part of their preparation time is after the student day. And so the agreement spells out that they will receive their agrees, they agree that part of that can be after the school day. Our side is making sure that they get the preparation time that they need. And it also spells out that on Fridays, there would be designated time for that preparation, recognizing that there is a lot to do for hybrid learning and for distance learning as far as creating videos and lessons and flip classroom things. So they have that additional time on Fridays. It does clarify that this is only while we're in hybrid. So if we were fortunate enough to have our numbers lower and everyone would come back, we would need to revisit that and make some changes because obviously if students are here on Friday, they can't spend 180 minutes on preparation. And then if we went to distance learning, that too would change because we no longer have students in the building. For now, as we'll speak to later, we're going to remain in hybrid. And so this would be in effect. And then the SPEA did vote on this and accept it.
Excellent, thank you. Any initial questions?
Can I just follow up with a question? I just want to make sure that we don't get, that we're not stuck. They've agreed that they would revisit this, or will they, it's not written as such that we're, that if SPEA makes the decision on their own, that we kind of like hybrid, we wouldn't be able to switch back to in-person? Does that make sense? I mean, if the numbers are right and everything, and it was a possibility.
No, it just, it just means that this agreement is in place while we're in hybrid and it doesn't, it's not connected to the decision at all.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Do we have a, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second? Is this a resolution because it's an MOU?
We're worried as well.
I think it's just a straight motion. Excellent. Any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion. Those in favor of approving the MOU between ISD 508 and the St. Peter Education Association, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will jump to the consideration of adoption of the handbooks for the 2020-21 school year. And oh, what a handbook it is. Several hundred pages, so.
So.
Superintendent Gronseth, however you want to pick that off?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, that was my fault.
Yes, each year, the school board reviews and considers approval of the handbooks for each of our schools. We're a little off on our timing this year because last month, we really spent a lot of time creating the COVID handbook that you reviewed and accepted last month. And so we have made a few changes. Some of the changes are due to COVID as well in how we structure some things. And so this month, you have the general handbooks and the co-curricular handbook. The co-curricular committee met earlier today and reviewed the changes within that and passed a motion to bring that to the whole board, seeing those changes as acceptable. So it's, as you say, several hundred pages, and we're not going to review that all, all of that information for you. But our principals are on hand this evening to answer any questions you might have. And given our technology complexities this evening, we'll just have them available should you have any specific questions about those changes that have been laid out for you.
Excellent. Questions?
So, other than like stuff that probably, I mean, is there anything major that is like, I don't want to say controversial, but you know, any hot topics that we should be aware of on any of the schools' handbooks? That was, you know, I don't know.
I will, I will look to our principals. Do you highlight any hotspots that you think may be controversial in these changes? Or is it mostly low-level changes?
I'll chime in. This is Annette. And I can speak for the high school. Usually the most controversial things all the time come from the high school. So I can tell you, there really isn't anything. We've made some pretty major changes in the last three to four years with the change of moving out to the, to our new site. And so they're really just, it was, it was a very close reading of it and things that were in, in the handbook, but not, no longer in practice. As you can see, and just if you read, if you just simply read the memo, those are the only changes
Okay.
that we had in the permanent handbook.
Similarly, at the middle school, there were no significant changes at the middle school in terms of the regular handbook. All of our changes were included in the COVID handbook and it was COVID related.
Yeah, pretty much the same thing at North Elementary as well. Just basically start end times, procedure for arrival and departure, adjustment with specialist time, and lunch and recess kind of logistics.
And that would be the same for South. I think one of the biggest things that we probably worried how it would go would be that drop-off. There's been a history of being able to walk your child in and go to the classroom. So of course, this year, that changed drastically. And we really had, had to utilize that drop and go loop. And so all students at South either arrive via the drop and go loop or on the bus. And it really has been going very, very smoothly. We have the flow down.
And no major changes in early childhood. We do have a drop-off change this year and pickup change as well, but that is in our COVID handbook.
Awesome.
Great, thank you very much.
I just have one question. I was just wondering, and this is Vicki. I was just wondering, have the students gotten the new handbooks or when will they be getting those?
They're all available from the high school online.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's great.
As soon as this, as soon as the new version is approved tonight.
Okay.
If I may jump in, Co-Curricular had some updates to the handbook as well. Not necessarily COVID-specific, but we did make some adjustments that can be found in the, the agenda, largely related to the, the co-curricular review that was done, a change to the mission and program goals, in addition to some language changes regarding start, last day to join a team, the philosophy at each level, some lettering policies, and then the updated indexing that went with, with those changes. If you have any questions, again, that's can be found in the agenda.
Great. John?
Hey, Doreen, I was looking at your sheet of areas that you're changing, and the topic of field trips was on there. Is that just the elimination of field trips? Or is there a way with it, we're trying to put that together so that kids get a chance to do something like that?
You're muted.
All right. If you take a look in the actual handbook, it talks about what our process would be in the event that we're able to have field trips going, moving forward. But at this time, due to COVID restrictions, there are no field trips.
Thank you.
I can tell you that the organization that I work with serve probably, I don't know, 150,000-plus school kids every year, and we're expecting none, so.
So you're saying it's a slight decrease?
Yes. Well, we've had some initial discussion. Is anyone willing to make a motion to adopt the handbooks for the 2020-21 school year?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Those in favor of adopting the handbooks for the 2020-21 school year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Handbooks are approved. Thank you very much, principals. The fifth and final action item on our agenda is consider the approval of the 2019-2021 master agreement with Office Support. Tim, I don't know if you or Superintendent Gronseth want to start, but this was a, this was was a lot of work on both the, the part of the school board and Office Support, so we appreciate everything.
Yeah, Chair Leonard, Superintendent Gronseth, members of the board. It was, it was a long process, it was a good process. I think it was nice to see the new superintendent get involved in negotiations. Maybe he didn't want, he didn't expect that coming in, but he, he was thrown in. It, we met often and we had, had some long discussions back and forth. A big shout out to Board Member Hager and Treasurer Carlson for their efforts in the process. A big shout out also to Office Support and their continued meeting with us and working through all the tidbits, but we got to the point where we found a medium ground. So I move that we accept the Office Support contract for the 2019 and 2021 contract years.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, further discussion?
Did a good job.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Those in favor of approving the 2019-21 master agreement with Office Support, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. All right, that ends our action items for tonight. We have a couple of information items. The first is fundraising plans by site.
Thank you, Chair Leonard. According to school board policy, each year you review the fundraising plans of each site. It's really so that we can coordinate those efforts and don't end up with competing efforts by different organizations and different schools and making sure we're not asking the same people over and over again for fundraising efforts. And so each of the schools has provided you with their current plan for fundraising and I'm, I'm not sure if we need to go through school by school or if you have specific questions, the principals are again on hand to answer for you. Although I am very curious about the meat sale at the high school.
I think there is value in reading the various fundraising efforts into the record because yes, it prevents competing fundraising, whatever, on our side, but also for the community, lets them know that, okay, no, these are the sanctioned activities you can expect to see. If you don't, if you're seeing something that's not on this list, then, you know, tread lightly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Would you like me to read those?
Yeah, is it fair to ask you or the principals to read them?
Why don't we have the principals read them?
Yeah, we'll start with the high school.
That was, sure, that was, it was kind of hard to hear that intro, maybe that's just me, but I would like to, none of these are new for us, other than that Chipotle curbside pickup that is a potential fundraiser for the band. Fruit sales and everything that I've heard from my advisors on this list are currently going online for their sales. That doesn't mean that the distribution would necessarily be online, but Mr. Bachman, you're on, you're in this meeting, rest assured, there will be a, there will be a safety protocol plan for all of the distribution of any of these fundraisers. I also want to point out the restored, or not, excuse me, the FFA, the classic car roll-in was, was that big major event that they had to fundraise for a scholarship in honor of land and grant last year that was, was held in the fall and, who held it this fall, we're keeping it, we're, we're holding out hope that we might be able to have that again this spring. Otherwise, I don't believe anything on our, our fundraising list is new.
Annette, the, part of the discussion, I think perhaps the sound isn't working so great, but we'd like you to read into record each of those fundraisers.
Oh, okay. Our band will be holding fruit sales and a Chipotle curbside pickup. The FFA will be holding meat stick sales. Their farm field is also not necessarily considered a fundraiser, but it is a source of income for the program. They occasionally will have meat sales if they raise chickens, beef or pork. There hopefully will be a restored tractor raffle with the funds going to scholarship. They will once again hold spring fruit sales and, because the band holds their fruit sales, hopefully, if this is approved, starting next week. They don't necessarily have the Amazon Smile account up and running yet, but if you're familiar with that, that's hopefully another, another fairly quick and easy source of income for the FFA. And then the classic car roll-in, hopefully they will be able to hold this spring. The World Language Department also does fundraising for students to be able to attend Concordia Language Village and, and possibly their, their trips abroad during the summertime. And they will be holding online chocolate and food sales and online coffee sales, which will be ongoing throughout the school year.
Mrs. Engeldinger, I don't know how many years ago it was, maybe it was last year, I don't even remember, but they used to do those Tumblr sales, I think it was the juniors? They could sell those Tumblers instead of paying class dues. Are you still doing that or not? Do you remember that?
Yeah, I do remember that, that was a couple of years ago and nothing was submitted by our, by our junior class officers, so if it's not on the list, I, I would assume it is not happening.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Principal Graff, we have a couple at the middle school?
Yeah, there are two at the middle school and they're the same two that we've done for the last three years. We have the band fruit sales and the World Language food sales and those two both go to raise money toward future trips.
Thank you. Principal Doherty, you have a few?
Yeah, ours was pared down a little bit. We used to do Great American like product sales. That is not happening this year, but we are doing a lot of collections that gets turned around and used for replacement like recess equipment. So it's like printer cartridges, box tops, family fresh receipts, Hy-Vee receipts. Those all go to recess equipment. We will have the Scholastic Book Fair and those funds are returned right into purchasing of more books for our libraries. We have been, a couple of programs that we offer donations, so we do Jump Road for Heart and the Cats for a Cause, and that's directed by either our FIA department as a donation to the Art Association or Student Council's Cause of the Month. And then we have the all-popular sticker machine in the media center that collects funds for the student council. And then also our Math-athon in the spring. We do an hour of math and then students collect donations for working hard on that and then that is used for our North Star t-shirts for all our incoming segregationers.
Excellent, thank you. Principal Oki?
It's a quarter every time I forget to do that, so you're up to 50 cents so far. Sorry about that. Nothing has changed on this list. Again, we really try to keep the South students from going out and selling anything, so all of our fundraisers are, are things that are generated from purchases from the parents' bank, such as the Scholastic Book Fair, they come to school, provided we're able to host those, you know, later on in the school year. We also sell yearbooks, so those, those pieces go to help fund classroom libraries and the yearbook sales go for various building initiatives. Original works, box tops, collecting box tops and t-shirt sales, that's typically been organized by our parent council. For this year, our parent council is also on hold. They are responsible typically for bringing in enrichment programs and at this point we do not have any coming in. We are also not gathering parents for monthly meetings. So that's kind of on hold until we see that things are a little bit safer to bring families in. The Read-a-thon is the South project that we do go out and solicit donations. We do really encourage the students only to solicit though from their family members. And the Kids' Heart Challenge is run in conjunction with the American Heart Association and it is with our FIA department. And we too collect family fresh and Hy-Vee receipts.
Excellent, thank you. You know, Superintendent Gronseth, and Drew, if you want to speak to this too, I think one of the benefits of reading that into the record is so that people know what's an official school fundraiser and what might be something else, might be an association, which also does a lot of good for the school, or it could be a private company that's not doing any good for the school and we've had those come through town as well. You know, maybe this is something that Kurt Hildebrand might consider just writing an article or a press release for, kind of at the beginning of every school year, you know, if we can put that on our website or with the Herald, just to let people know what to expect.
Very good.
Great, information, any further questions on information item number one? All right, we'll move on to number two and that is the review of COVID-19 data and instructional model. So Superintendent Gronseth.
Yes, this is something that gets a lot of my attention each week. We have come to expect new information to come out on Thursdays. Thursdays are when we have our weekly call with the commissioner and MDE. And we also get new information. This information comes from a couple of different sources. The official numbers that you hear about come from the Minnesota Department of Health and on their website, they do have that data. This, it's new cases per 10,000 in each county. And so we have been tracking that each week and this information is actually slightly outdated because I put this when the meeting was posted. And so the current data from the state, the formal data, and just a little explanation of that, the formal data is actually two weeks behind where we are at today. And so the, the formal data that's out now, NICLIT, and this would be as of 9/17, NICLIT at 13.02, LeSueur County, which we also serve, at 27.16, and the current numbers up to last Friday. So this isn't the state numbers because we're also tracking live time, these numbers. By tracking live time, the reason they have that delay is so that they can clean the data. They can take out cases that turned out to, you know, they were college students that actually lived in another county or they're attending school somewhere else, or positives that turned out to be negatives or negatives that turned out to be positives. But we track the current numbers so that we can see how those numbers are trending. So right now we're at 13.02 based on the state data, but I know currently we're at 12.43. So our trend is downward and our hope is that we would continue to trend downward. So far it's been a bit of a roller coaster on that scale, as you all know. The LeSueur numbers have been trending higher than the, than the NICLIT numbers. And so we have started to break that down by city. I know that initially we said that we really need to consider the whole, the whole county, we can't pick that data. And with the help of MDE, they've called it taking a more surgical approach and really looking at individual circumstances for each of our school districts and sometimes even individual schools. So the, the state could come in and say, we recommend that we close the high school for two weeks. They haven't said that, but they could shut down a specific school. They might do that if there are a number of staff on-site or a number of students at any given site that we really need to get a handle on. Right now, we have been in the hybrid model, as you know. We can continue that hybrid model, which we are very happy about. There are, we're really surrounded by school districts that have had to go to distance learning. You know, they, they started in a little, a little faster, a little more fully in-person and they're finding that there, there have been some issues in those communities where their numbers are continuing to climb. I know Wasika, Wasika County is in the 70s. Yeah, and LeSueur was in the 50s, Blue Earth is very high. And so a number of districts are having to go to all distance learning. We are thrilled to be able to stay in hybrid and that really speaks to what we see going on in the community. If, if we're all keeping COVID in our minds and making sure that we are doing those daily screenings and I really hope that families have made that just part of their, their daily routine is checking in with everybody in the home and making sure that they don't have any new symptoms and really, you know, using those refrigerator magnets to just review the symptoms, even though it's every single morning, I hope it becomes habit. And if people have been exposed to a known case, they need to quarantine for 14 days. And that's information that came out from the state last week. I did send out a, a voice message and email with that information on Sunday evening as well. If anyone in the home has a positive COVID test, then kids really need to stay home from school because we want to stay on top of these numbers. We want to make sure that we can at least continue in a hybrid model. We're sure hopeful that we can come back fully if the, if the numbers continue to decrease. The recommendation from the state is that if we were considering moving to a less restrictive model, that those numbers be down and trending downward for at least three weeks. And right now, we, we haven't been able to hold a trend for three weeks. And so we just really want to be careful. We want the kids to continue to, to come to school at least a couple of days a week. And so we will continue to work with the state and the county, continue to watch these numbers. And if we were going to recommend a change, we would of course be coming to the school board, but also talking to our parents and our students and getting their feedback on, on that as well. With that, I'm, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that process or about the numbers. It's just kind of become part of my, my daily routine is checking numbers.
Thank you so much. Questions?
No, but I appreciate you explaining that because that is something, I mean, it seems like we have all these different kind of numbers that people look at, so I think it's helpful to kind of explain that and how we make our decisions or how you make decisions.
Absolutely. Thank you. We'll move on to reports. Who, building principals, I don't know if you're continuing your, your tradition of electing one, one principal to speak or if you're all going to go through things.
I think they, now that school has started.
I think we're, we're back on the, the rotation here. We're going to each do a little report and then certainly answer any questions. So this is AT, I'll report for early childhood. We did hold conferences prior to school, so that was a really good chance for us to meet our family, because it was great to have folks back in the building again. We had our safety protocols in place and those were followed quite well. And so we were excited to get kids here. This is our second week with students in our building. We have over 110 preschoolers right now and certainly that number will continue to grow as our year goes on. Right now we're focused on learning routines and that looks a little bit different this year while we're trying to keep kids socially. year, while we're trying to keep kids socially distanced, or at least bringing their awareness to that, and having those safety procedures in place with washing and hand sanitizer and so on, so we're working hard with that. We are working to make sure groups are in smaller sizes, so if they go to the playground, it's maybe two classes at a time, rather than having many classes out there at once. So we do have those routines and and procedures in place to ensure that our kids are as safe as they can be at school, and we love having them there, and our adults as well. Big shout out to the early childhood staff for making it all all go. Our biggest challenge right now is our drop off procedure, and that we're, instead of having parents bring students into the building, we're picking them up curbside, and so we're working with Officer Hughes to ensure that we're not creating any sort of traffic hazards on Broadway Avenue, so I'll keep you up to date on that. This week, we're hoping our early childhood family education classes will begin. We're taking a little bit of a different approach to those this year, instead of having folks come in the building, at least for this beginning session, we're taking it on the road, and we're also doing some things outside. So we're having some classes outdoors on our own school site, as well as an example might be meeting a class up at the Arboretum, or some nature focused ECFE. Mrs. Sizer is working in ECFE this year, and she's taking it on the road and doing stories in the driveway, and so we're taking a little bit different look at how we can do outreach with families, and get them involved in our school district, so that's really exciting. And I still certainly would encourage anyone who might be still looking for preschool programming for their child or ECFE programming, to make sure you give us a call, and we will get you set up. So that's just a little snippet from early childhood.
Thank you.
All right, and at South Elementary, I would echo many of the same things that ET said. We are on day number four, we've completed four days with our A group, and our B group will be in for their fourth day, starting tomorrow. It really has been a smooth transition, I think it got to the point, it was great to see students in the building at conferences, and you could just tell there was an excitement in the air, finally, real live kids in front of us. But I think there was also a little bit of apprehension and nervousness about what will this actually be like once they get there here, and all this planning and preparation, and and will it work? And I would be lying if I said everything has worked. We have, we have met regularly to talk about, okay, what are the things that we need to continue to tweak? We've worked on our bus drop off and pickup a couple of times, and we're still working to get it perfect. But it really has gone well, when you think about the fact that every element of our, every moment of our day had to be examined, and we had to figure out everything from getting them in the door, to staggering recess, to putting stickers, this whole place is stickered up. No one will ever wonder how far six feet is, because that's all they're going to see, it is everywhere. Just, you know, really trying to help our students know how to safely social distance, and we're still giving lots of reminders, but masks, students have handled those very, very well. There's lots of procedures and processes in place that have helped the students, I think. It still feels like a school, yet we are, we are doing it as safely as we can. The other firsts that are happening this week are, we will have our first fire drills, first two fire drills, and everything we do, we do it twice and call it the first time. So we'll be having two fire drills this week, and we will also be working on bus safety this week, and we would like to thank Saints Bus Company for allowing us to have a couple of buses. The teachers will be going over the various protocols with them, and taking them out, and also working on emergency evacuation with that. And we do do that drill twice a year. After school tonight, there were a few teachers out down near a rust ramp, and setting up, setting up some of our older chairs that we still had in storage, and just setting up an area for an outdoor classroom, so that especially for things like interactive reloads, they can take the students outside, sit in the shade, and actually do some of their reading activities out there. So things are off to a great start here at South.
Well, greetings everybody from North Elementary School, where it's very similar to what Doreen was mentioning, it's the year of two firsts of everything, so it's kind of interesting how the first, the B day of the first days always seemed to go a little bit better than the A days, but things have been going really well. You know, it's fun to see as the teachers, you know, dig in with the students, and you know, start with kind of whole group, building relationships, rolling things out, now they're starting to get more targeted in small groups, but then you see them with their masks and their shields on at their kidney tables, and so that, I'm still working on getting used to seeing all the PPE in the building, but the students don't seem to let that bother them at all, in fact, they have, they have, they have a great time kind of showing their own little personality with their masks and their styles that way. You know, I was kind of interested to see what kind of numbers would be at North Elementary School at the beginning of the year, and I checked our enrollment, and we were only two off, we're sitting at 470 students, or about that same thing last year, 472. Fourth grade takes the cake with 171 students as of today. We're gearing up our PBS teams, gearing up for our first assembly of the year, albeit virtual, and they have recreated with the green screen, the Saints Center recording, so they have some broadcasters that they recorded, they're recognizing super saints this year, and so they have students in it, even working the principal in there in in many creative ways. So Matt, Matt Lewis is our leader of our PBS team, bringing lots of great new ideas, using technology to roll that out. And then something, you know, in in this this era of kind of differences and uncertainties, something that's still warms everybody's heart at North, and people share that all the time, is our Thankful Thursdays, with staff getting a chance to just enter what they're thankful for every Thursday, and then a report of that comes out every Sunday evening, kind of lifts people's spirits for the day, and there were certainly a lot in the list that came out on Sunday, so that just just shows how people are working together, and have worked really hard to get this very unique year off and running. So that's North Elementary.
We're off to a great start as well at the middle school. As you guys know, we have a change in start and end times to accommodate that two-tier busing system. We start at 8:30 and end at 3:30. Those times are going well, it almost seems like our kids a little bit more awake when they arrive, which is a nice thing. Like everybody else, you know, we've got our safety measures going, we've got our controlled movements with signage on the floors for students to stay to the right. We've got minimized locker use to make sure that kids are staying apart. We've got staggered pass times, we hand wash, we hand sanitize, we hold classes outside as much as we can. We've moved to four lunches this school year, to really be able to spread students out and to have lunches safely. And then, of course, with the hybrid model, our 50% of our student population on any given day. Some of the things we're working on this month throughout our advisories, we have our preparedness is our topic for the month. If you remember, we have Saints Pride, and the pride stands for preparedness, respect, integrity, determination, and empathy, and this month's all about preparedness. And this year, our preparedness takes on a little bit different meaning, because there's some urgency in getting these skills to students that maybe we wouldn't have to focus on all the time, such as our COVID procedures, how to use email effectively, is something that we're really spending a lot of time on, so that our students can communicate with staff on their their distance learning days. We're really spending a lot of time on how to organize a Google Drive, how to continue using Google Classroom effectively, how to continue using our planners and our binders. So this month in advisory, we're really focusing on getting our kids prepared to take us on throughout the rest of the year. You know, just kind of, on a personal note, you know, it was super energizing to see kids in the building the first few days of school, you know, the planning phase of the summer is very draining for me, but seeing those students was very, very empowering. So off to a great start, very excited that we continue to stay in the hybrid model for now.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate everything that my colleagues have talked about, and John alluded to it, that our work all summer was kind of nonstop, just simply to get kids and staff in the buildings, which is very different than other years, and the logistics, planning, and all of that just took up, took up all of a crazy amount of time for us. But once they were there, things felt, things felt good. It's different, but it feels really good, and and I just have to give some thank yous to our custodians for making it possible, the way that they're working during classes, wiping down all door handles, between making sure that tabletops and everything is cleaned, I believe that that goes a long way in keeping kids in the building. So thanks to Mr. Bachman and his custodians. I also, our paras are kind of unsung heroes right now, too. They are doing, doing very different duties than they assumed that they were being hired for. High school paras are doing, are working Saints overtime with with elementary kids and little kids on Fridays, and they're, they're packing, they're packing meals, they are passing out breakfasts and lunches, and it, it feels, it feels really good to see everybody with the all hands on deck attitude. And then Jordan and Kristy Davis, actually, I don't, I think people maybe have an idea of just how crazy the work in the 80s office is right now, but it's insane, and it, like you have to, those guys are pivoting like on a dime about 50 times a day, and planning for soccer on Friday nights, no, maybe football on Friday nights. They were ready and excited to, to get our football and volleyball kids safely practicing and and safely playing. So thank you, I can't imagine, I know all of our jobs are crazy right now, but pretty sure yours is the craziest, so thank you to Jordan for his work in the 80s office. And then I just wanted to talk briefly about, I know that the high school experience is is a really special four years for kids, and and we always say it, everybody only gets one shot at high school, and I know that that there have been a lot of things lost since March, but now that we have, now that all of that planning has happened, and I know it's, it's still going to be crazy, but we have our, our student council, and our class advisors, and our kids all pitching in to start to try to make some of those moments as, as fun as, as a traditional school year might be for them. So thank you to everybody, everybody's working crazy hard, and it is greatly appreciated.
Excellent, thank you. Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you. I have to start off by saying the, the people that are up there on that screen right now, the Brady Bunch. Every single person on that screen has really made Herculean efforts to make this school year happen, and each one of them has spent hours and hours and hours and weeks developing all of the details of the procedures and protocols that are making everything possible this year. You know, when you think about all of the details, from how things are cleaned, to how kids move down the hall, what is lunch going to look like, drop off, pickup, activities, every class, the schedules for every single student, all of those details, and the time that it took, the people on the screen right now are definitely responsible for making all of that happen. And on top of just school happening, we're also doing childcare at the same time, and Tammy has done so much. A lot of the hiring that you saw on the consent agenda had to do with childcare, had to do with housekeeping, and they are orchestrating all of that work, training in new people, making sure that we're able to support our students, our staff, and the community in in this crazy, crazy time, so I just have to give them a shout out. I am so happy and thrilled to be part of the team, following, following their lead in in many of the cases. So as you've heard, school is well underway. It has been much different than anything we're used to, but it is, it is going well, and when I visit the sites, I still see people smiling and laughing at the end of the day, which is a good sign. Maybe we're just losing it, but it is good to see. So many thanks go out to all the staff who've worked on planning and preparing for this school year. I also want to give out a shout out to our partners, Saints Bus, and Aviance, and the City, our premier partners, and so many others. Without the whole community supporting this, and I have to tell you, Saints Bus especially has gone above and beyond, to go from a one-tier to a two-tier system, to completely change the whole schedule, to figure out Groups A and Groups B, and childcare, and transportation for special services. Anything we've said, they've said it, we can make it work, we can make it work, and they have been great supporters, so that, that's all of my, my big thank yous, that I just feel grateful for everything that everybody's doing every day. I, on another note, typically in in September, school districts across the state are reviewing the North Star report. We didn't take the MCAs last year, and so there is no North Star report to review. The state is currently planning to go forward with MCA testing this year, and so would, that would return next September for those reports. We do plan, not talking about student achievement, next month's agenda, we hope to tell you about some of our fast testing, and some of the ways that we are tracking student achievement. We do plan also to have a student representative to the board, you'll notice, we don't have one yet tonight, with the slightly delayed start to school, the student council hasn't quite figured out their officers yet, and so we're hopeful that in October, we'll have a student joining us probably electronically, assuming the board continues to meet in person, and that'll be your decision to make. I do want to encourage families, if they haven't already, to complete applications for free and reduced price lunch services, or meal services. While the USDA has temporarily extended free breakfast and lunch to students, that is for a limited amount of time, we're not quite sure how long that will be, because it is dependent on funding. So when the funding runs out at the federal level, then that extension is complete, and we don't want families to be caught without the supports they need to continue those services. So it's really important that families fill out those forms now, and there are also other supports that are connected to receiving free reduced price lunch services, like a reduction in activities fees, or help getting equipment for activities. It's also tied to several different funding sources for the school district, for academic supports for students, and so it's really important for families to fill out those forms, and we can definitely help anyone who is having difficulty or needs assistance filling out those forms. They are available on our website, on the food service page, and they are in English and Somali and Spanish, and as I said, we, we can support anybody who needs help filling those out, but it's really important for people to fill them out, especially with the economic environment we're experiencing. We know that there are families who maybe would not have qualified before, but given the situation that they're in, we're able to help them out and get them some support, so we really encourage people to do that. And I, I think that's, that's about it, other than to say, I'm so happy to be here in St. Peter, my wife and I are loving the community, and it's just been wonderful to get to know so many people, and now that kids are back in school, and meeting families and kids, it's just, it's just wonderful, so thank you again.
Thank you so much. Board members, John, do you want to, we'll go around the table with this?
I don't have anything.
Bill?
I'd like to thank Superintendent Gronseth, and the principals, and all the teachers. and all the teachers for doing an incredible job of getting this insane time that we live in, getting the kids back to school, and that's very appreciated. I'd like to thank Mrs. Ingeldinger. I appreciated hearing an update on the paraprofessionals. That is very much appreciated. And Mrs. Skinner, thank you. I know just a little bit what I've heard is going on with the Tier One and the childcare. So thank you for all you're doing and your efforts.
Thank you. Drew?
Yes, just a big thank you all for getting it going, the ship is moving. It's good to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I have two granddaughters that are in middle school. And a fifth grader came home the other day, and mom asked how school was going. And she said, "Well, it's taken a lot to get used to wearing that mask." But she said, "You know what the worst part is?" She said, "When you're playing a board game, and you got to get up and walk across the room every time it's your turn to move your board piece." And I thought, "Oh, my gosh, I couldn't even imagine." You guys had to, I mean, every aspect of what goes on in there, you've had to probably work around and change. And I just couldn't even imagine it. So I just want to thank you all so much, because I know it's a lot of work, and you deserve a lot of credit.
Well, I could sit here and say thank you, and everybody can say thank you over and over again. I just go with the fact that I work in a facility where there's an awful lot of parents of students, and I sometimes get a parent who will come up and ask me, "Are you on the school board?" And I don't know why I all of a sudden go to the, "Oh, boy, here it comes." But surprisingly, almost all the time, it's, you know, we really appreciate the fact that we're at least going to school halftime. And it's not, so I think when you, Superintendent Granseth, when you say there's schools around us that are going backwards and we're plugging along, I mean, yep, it's a credit to everybody that you mentioned, and everybody up on the Brady Bunch, and all sorts of stuff. It's a community effort, and it seems to be working. So I appreciate everybody.
Thank you.
I'm going to give a shout out to the students, because when I'm doing drop-offs in the morning, and I see everybody walking in with their masks, like, I swear they're better at this than we as adults are. I mean, I have to sit in them all day. And so, I think it's just awesome, and they all just seem to comply. I'm sure there's some people that don't, but... And then the other thing is, is with the state high school league and all the changes, I just want to, I mean, it sounds weird, because my husband's a coach, but really, you know, all the coaches that are really going above and beyond to figure out how to make their sports work with the environment we're in. And yeah, I just want to say that, so.
Excellent, thank you. Well, it's tough going last, because everyone thanked all the people that you wanted to thank, so I appreciate that. I do want to give another round of thanks to Chris Overbow and Gus Sorbo for setting up this system. It worked actually pretty well. And I know if you're online, you can't necessarily see our faces, but thank you for talking to the back of our heads. We appreciate that. I'd like to thank our alumni as well. If you look through the consent agenda, and you look at a bunch of those new hires, they're students who recently graduated, or in terms of overtime, like my daughter, students who are still here, and that was mentioned. But, you know, nobody wants this to happen, nobody wants this to continue, but there have to be positives that come out of this. And maybe we, this experience of being home instead of being somewhere else and having the opportunity to work in the school district sparks someone's career. And those are the things that I really try and focus on, because if I just focused on how terrible it would be, I just wouldn't want to get out of bed ever, so. Thanks, everyone. Any further comments, questions? All right, we have upcoming meetings. This wasn't our last one ever. So October 5th, there's a study session at six-thirty. And October 19th is our regular board meeting at six-thirty as well. Without any further discussion, I would be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.